She doesn't agree with this, but great. That's what the meeting's for. I really feel like we're being penalized for a lack of participation by property owners. When we as a group on this commission, this is our own time as a public service, I feel. And I really, I don't know. I don't know if there's anything else that we can do.
It seems like the lack of participation has hurt us more than the negative impacts. It's the silent ones that it seems like are negatively impacting.
My mother was upset.
We are in trouble.
She made me raise my hand.
Come on up here.
Really, well, I think a lot of it is the fear of what it is. You don't know. And I know you've said that because I've got mine. I tried to get it here and you were sick. I couldn't about two years. But it's the fear of not knowing really what's gonna happen. Exactly. Because I don't know. You know what I mean?
I understand.
And I don't have a computer. The terror's there and he can explain it to you.
And anyway, nothing else gonna happen other than what you decide's gonna happen.
Right. Well, in a way, I think I understand that. I do understand. But it's what's down the road? What are you gonna do to me down the road? I mean, what are you gonna put on me down the road? You know what I mean?
I'll tell you what. Probably get Terry and Mark to take care of Cory and me. Hey, kids, you do it.
Well, I'd kind of like to. But really, it's like I say, it is the fear of not knowing what it's all about at once.
Would they help her get her building back to what it was? I mean, you know, what kind of grants would you do that?
There are grants.
But I mean, like, if you had a grant, does she have to pay so much? And then they, you know, she don't even understand that. Yeah, she left her building just like that.
I think maybe Brian could speak to that better than anybody.
Yeah, there we have the Machee Grants on the Taylor's capacity for the Machee Grants as well. We have the Volvo's, the Volvo's loans. And again, if you want to bring it back, that's great. You don't have to. You don't have to do any of the utilities you don't want to. But if you, I know the previous thing on your building, you had a great outcropping window up there. Actually, I have seen this picture before. But yeah, you had the outcropping windows.
Take here.
And if you wanted to do that, there are grants out there for you to do that. Also, there's actually, that would be expensive. And that's why you don't have to do it if you don't want to. But again, also by being in a local historic district, you get some tax, you can qualify for tax credits on your, on that improvement.
But see, there's so much. I think the other people don't know. Just like, I don't know what's happening back.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if Bill, I don't know if you're willing to share with me those 23 property owners. I'd be willing to sit down with each one of them and explain it, you know, before the next, before the next reading. If you're willing to share those names, we have the Volvo's, just sit down with each one and explain what our motivation was, why we did this, what it actually means. Not to say that you didn't do that, but I'd be more than right to do that with those people.
Most of the property owners said they did not want to do that.
You know what? I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't go around and I didn't ask.
I understand. But that makes it difficult for us then because some of these could be based on, you know, misconceived notions. We still have, we still have the notion that we were Nazis going out and gonna be telling people that they have to take it back to a certain, that they're gonna have to make changes to their building and that they have to use the original material and stuff on the building, which is all not, not true at all. So some of those, you know, we're trying to battle the miseducation, if it is the case of miseducation. But if they come to the means, if they don't speak or allow their names, it's hard for us to battle, I guess.
Basically, what we're trying to do, Brian, is say is the people don't count who they are, the concerns that they have. You can't answer them. The concerns that they have.
But I understand being an officer, you know, I appreciate George, what you've done. I've got some disrespect whatsoever, but I want to try to get, if they're willing to talk to me, just pass it on. I'd, you know, I'd love to sit down with them and I'll pay for coffee or lunch or whatever. At least to get something for you.
And if you still feel that there's been a public meeting.
Drew, I understand your frustrations and your concerns, but, you know, we want to make sure we're doing, we're gonna make the right decision for everybody, too. You guys have taken a lot of your time. We do appreciate that. We do. So it's not like we're trying to give you, you know, make you feel like you're spending your wheels for nothing. But before we take that step and say, this is what we want to do, we want to make sure we've considered every alternative and we're making the right decision. And that's it. That's it.
No, no, I understand that the council is a state.
If I could, just in the interest of time, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to pass ordinance 2011-3 on the second reading. And then that'll still give us 30 days, since we're talking about historic preservation, that's nothing, to, for the third reading. And then if you have one reading, that's fine. If you don't, that's perfect. And I, and I do appreciate all the work you guys have done. Herb made the motion. I want to say that. Any more discussion?
Jamie?
Yes.
No. Herb?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Pass the second.
Thank you. Thank you.
On a record, tell me rate change. Ordinance 2011-5 and 2011-6, amending ordinance 2010-2. And this is what we had done on taking it from the first year to March 15th to give the council time to review. Yes, it was passed last month in the first reading.
Helen, just to follow in this act. You know, if we approve these, then what about the review for this year?
We did, we did it last meet.
I just didn't, I don't remember anything official to be able to say that we agreed or didn't agree. We kind of, we didn't, actually, there's nothing in the minutes that says we agreed to the rate change or we didn't agree to the rate change. You know, and that's what I'm, I don't know if there's anything that says we did the official review.
It was supposed to be this week where we were gonna approve, repeal, or whatever, or sit for the rate approval this year, I think.
I think sequentially, you want to amend this first. You want to, you want to change your date because the key is the effect. You want to amend first the rate increase is not going into effect. May 1 is the effective date. Now, under the ordinance that's currently as written, the review would have been done in February 1 of this year. But you're changing that, what's the consequence right now is you're changing that review date. You want to change that first. And then if you, if you elect to have a review as to whether it's, and have specific finding as to whether the rate increase would be unreasonable. That's the sequence you want to do. Because right now, as it's written, the review would have been done in February 1. Does that make sense?
But with the review being changed, unless we have a review, that goes into effect, correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that.
Well, Christian, I mean, yeah, it just says we're scheduled.
I thought it was that we didn't do anything that was automatically, that could be versus what.
All you guys done last month was pass these ordinances, which is nothing more than changing the February 1 to March 15. That's it.
I think we were then under the understanding, or at least I was, by changing it to March 15, in case enough time decides whether we were gonna amend it, repeal it, or approve it. That's what I was.
This has nothing about the increase. This is just changing.
You know what? I understand.
And that's what you guys asked us.
We agree with you, June. That's why we're saying we didn't do the official review. All we talked about was changing the date.
You're right.
And to Helen's point, I think that's exactly right. The way the ordinance is written is unless you do have specific finding, that's a, that is very reasonable, that it will increase where the ordinance was passed last year.
I moved it past 2011-5 and 2011-6 on Saturday.
Second.
Christian?
Herb?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
Okay, so when do we review this? Well, let's pass it on all three reaps per chapter. So I make a motion to suspend the rules to pass ordinance, or on ordinance 2011-5 and 2011-6 for the third reading.
Second.
Herb, we'll pause that. No more discussion during that.
Bill?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
You're taking the motion for a reading. Second. Any more discussion? We'll call, we'll push it.
Bill?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now the review date's March 15th. So we have until March 15th to do the official review. Is that correct to say that we have till March 15th? That's sort of what I was talking about before we were voting on this. So that puts us right at, I mean, we gotta do it within the next week.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's, that's correct. The way it's, the way it is, the amendment is made.
It should be done tonight.
If we're, if we're wanting to make a change.
Yep.
If it doesn't make things work.
Yeah. There's no, and I mean, I think, again, I mean, as you proved it, it's the council making a specific finding that the rates and charges aren't reasonable. By majority vote, then, then you're right, the rate increase goes into effect.
You receive these in your packet. There's information. That should tell you what you need to know.
So since the ordinance was about only changing the date, can we discuss, I mean, or can we make a motion on amend, repeal, or whatever?
Yeah, I, I don't think, under that Section 7 bill, that you're precluded from, as a council, saying that, you know, I reviewed this information and, you know, I've got, I have specific. Or I believe that the information after reviewing it says that the rate increase would be unreasonable and necessary. I believe you can do that. I don't, I don't know that you're precluded just because that was not 91.
And really, I don't think this has ever been done in history of Greensburg that I'm aware of, where we, the council, said, well, hold up. We're not going to let these rates happen unless we review them each and every year. And we've done this.
I was just looking to make sure we put something in the minutes to say we review. I mean, right now, there's nothing in the minutes to say that we have a review.
Well, you have the information you received last month from the water and waste line. And you have this information here tonight, that you'll see Friday, that Donna had put in the packet, to show you the finances where they're at. And considering, you know, that Unbaugh said that we should raise it 15% upfront, but the council decided we'll 5% each year. You automatically won't take in as much revenue as you would have if you raised 15% upfront. And we haven't spent any effort. We haven't put anything in capital improvement. We reduced a lot of that to get to that 15% upfront, which never happened. And we've cut, cut, and cut. We're still cutting. One reason, we have two ordinances tonight is because we took more people off the payroll or subsidized by the utilities along cities, which are a factor. You know, we're doing everything we can, and we still need that 5% this year and next year. I'll tell you that right up front. It has to happen if we're gonna maintain the water and wastewater lines. Do the improvements or just the maintenance, not what we need to do.
So if we're in agreement, we would be doing nothing seemingly with that ordinance because it would automatically may go up to 5%.
Yeah, if it was 2, because you only have four today. If it was 2-2, the way that this is written, it would, the increase would happen.
But the council can stop it from happening.
Correct.
I guess all I was looking at was, I mean, basically, it says we should do a review. There's nothing in the minutes that says we review. So I understand, I mean, you did the official review. Can we look at that?
The time you spent last month reviewing what you received from the water and wastewater offices, on the charts and graphs, things of that nature, that's reviewing. And if you want to spend more time after the meeting for a month, look at it, you can do that as well, determining that where we are at. I mean, all honesty, with respect.
I'm just saying, document in the meetings, in the minutes that we reviewed the number. Move on, or we can vote to change it, I guess.
So what you're saying is you just want June to write in her minutes that we would see for next month that we said the council would review.
Yeah, ordinance 2011-5 and ordinance 2011-6 says now that we're gonna review these by March 15th. And so on the March 7th meeting minutes, it's gonna show we reviewed it. I'm gonna make a motion to repeal the rates of taxes for this year because I want to see what it's gonna do for next year from what we had, from the 5% we've got rates. So what it's gonna do for next year, so the 5% we've already done. And honestly, I don't want to put any more due hardship on anybody else right now, tax classes, in the economy than I am.
If you think in advance to the future, you'll be looking out for the water lines and wastewater lines that serve us to this community. Not wait to see what's gonna happen a year from now, when we don't have enough money there to do what we need to do. There was a member of the audience that wanted to speak. Mr. Bauer?
My name's Larry Bauer. Thanks. Less than a year ago, I came to the meeting, which must have been May of last year, when this ordinance was first being considered. And my question at that time was, why would we want to put in a series of triggers to raise the rates if we didn't know we needed them? If we didn't know we needed the rate increase? I think your response, Mr. Mayor, was that, well, you know, we've already received these numbers from our accounting, like Unbaugh. My response to that was that they're only crunching the numbers given to them. What have we done to try to reduce expenses? The answer I got to that was, well, we're not gonna hire as many summer help this year. And I thought, okay. If anybody believes that that will take care of the situation, that's fine. But my point is this. I think that the council should at least reach a consensus that they want to allow the rate increase to go through, or they don't, whatever. Okay? Because isn't that what this ordinance is actually saying? It's saying that the council needs to review factors such as capital outlays, the utility's revenues, expenses. I think that we should, as council people, you ought to at least go on record as saying, yes, I do believe that the utility rate increase is justified. Instead of just passively letting it, you know, letting it slide without taking any action. So, thank you very much.
And in response to that, not only did we not pay for summer help last year, we got it given to us by different organization. We also took the, one of the most highest paid men at that plant and took an amount of the utility, water utility, and transferred it to the street department. The street department is short, too. So the water company that worked, one person's short of what they normally do. The water company, instead of hiring a lot of the contractor things to be done, they're doing theirself and trying to save money that way. And, you know, I asked, my question was, what did they do the last time they raised the rates 16% to try to cut costs? And I asked the utility, the department heads, said, enough, we went on the same as we had before. We did something this time, one that's ever been done before, to my recollection.
The other thing with that, not in the past, that they actually said, we're gonna review this every year. We asked them, we review this every year before we implement this rate increase. That way, we know we're doing the right thing. We know we're not gonna put undue burden upon the taxpayers, but we need that increase in rates.
And I give the council credit for that.
That's the reason we put that in, to take that responsibility.
I made a motion earlier to repeal for this year.
Do I have a second on Bill's motion to repeal the 5% rate increase? Very good. Motion dies. So I guess we need a motion to do the 5% increase, or we don't do anything, and automatically it goes into effect.
If we don't do anything, it automatically.
I'll make the motion that we go with the 5% rate increase.
Second.
First, casual. We'll call both, please, too.
Herb?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
I'm glad it passed because I hate to tell the residents of Greensburg that we can't fix our lines, but we don't have the money to do it. Next time, it's new business. Greensburg School Board Department. That was appointed by the council. And that term expires June 30th of this year. And it doesn't have to vote on the night, you choose not to. But if you choose to do so, he has, as your letter reads, he is elected to.
Did they all get a letter?
Yes.
From Dave Wyler, who received the letter, is asking to be reappointed for the second four-year term. I did talk with Mr. Hunter after I received this letter, and he said that he has been very conscientious. He's missed maybe one meeting in four years. His head teacher in school this year will be, his last one is graduating, and he said he's always worried, concerned, and makes sure that he's aware of what's on their agenda. And if he doesn't, he finds out, and he felt that it would be a good time to reappoint. And this is a council point because it must be a Republican. Next year, there will be another of them that'll be going off, and it will be a Democrat, Al Moore, that'll be going off next year.
Will be a Republican?
Pardon?
We got to vote, we got to the council.
I'll make a motion, is that your fault? Mr. Wabber?
I second that.
More discussion?
I just like, I can't think of anybody better than Dave Wyler for the school board.
I can't either.
But, I mean, in the interest of giving other people an opportunity, they may want to serve on the school board. I think we are kind of obligated to at least allow the opportunity for that, throw it off the next council meeting. I would say that. A criticism of the passage.
Most of it made seconds.
Yeah. Yeah, the second to me, I mean, the votes. But based on Herb's comments, we can vote, yeah.
I should have talked to him. Can you, can Helen withdraw her motion?
I will throw my motion.
Can't take, can that take it?
Jamie, can we?
I think so.
I'm sorry.
So is Helen wants to throw her second?
Well, if we're going to do this, we need to quickly get the word out that we are accepting applications and what qualifications and so forth we need to be asked. We have to see a few that they don't read, or they aren't somewhat aware of what are stipulations that's, that's put on us as to how we need to lead. And we need to live in Orange, Greensburg area.
Well, and my point is, at least we advertise with a criticism of the passive, the same people off the boards.
That's a good point.
Yeah, they have, they could be reappointed for a second four-year term.
Correct.
They can only do eight years, and they must step off.
I fully anticipate voting today, a month, that I would like the, the community to have the opportunity to express their anticipation.
If that goes out there, then why should I send my resume in to you?
Well, I don't.
That comment that you made.
Well, it may be a better resume than that. I simply.
You argued with yourself, Herb.
Yeah.
That's right.
So we want to hold up until next month and.
Well, you may want to position Helen, I don't know.
You, you will get out the information?
I will take and have advertised the newspaper and radio. And I'll call David first.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is Ellen See, from this program. She's not here. Okay. Helen's on that committee.
Well, you all should have in your packet the proposal that we have. A committee was appointed by the mayor, and my older, I believe, worked on this for two years. So if it's in the budget, the money, last year, there was $100,000, but in the budget, this year, we put in $50,000. And I guess if you have any questions as to a proposal, comments, or what, we try to, they could use either the YMCA or Anytime Fitness. We had originally, when we were talking, thought, well, we should go with one or the other. Then we found out some employees were already at one or the other. So at the mayor's suggestion, we said, okay, we'll offer it to either of the two. And that's where we are. I will add that I don't think it's on here, but I did get a call from the Y, and they told me that they would offer a two-week free trial period for any new people that might want to join the Y. So then we have two weeks of trial, I guess you'd say.
I'm sure the council's ready, but there's some requirements that the employee has to maintain to be reimbursed.
Yeah, and I think we received this in time. If you've got any questions, try and find us, Herb. Here's another topic.
Can we reduce it in budget time from $100,000 to $50,000?
To 50,000. And in figuring it, we thought everybody who took advantage of it, it would still be less than the $50,000.
Based on what's started?
Pardon?
For the whole year?
We would like to, no, we would like to start this, if we put enrollment April 2011, using this year's $50,000. Kathy?
I have a question. Because I'm a member of the Y, and we have a family membership. Is this just for the employee itself?
Just the employee?
It only covers the single rate, so you'd have to pay the difference.
Okay. But in a family, family situation, if you would not be paying as much, we would not be paying as much because it's $50.75, I think Diane Hart is here, if any questions for the Y, for families. So we would pay the $25 because it would be for you that would be employed and.
And then Ron, too.
That he would be, yes.
So we were pretty much covered.
Yeah, so pretty much be covered, right?
Yes, it would be, yes, you would be covered, like the two of you, yes, the boys. But it would be, right now, it's $30.75. Now, the Y does have, as it says there, a $125 initial fee to join.
With 30 members, yeah.
But for new people, Jamie, if they go 60 times in six months, or if they, because they're looking at three times a week, they could get that done even in shorter than six months, that $125. they could get that done even in shorter than six months, that hundred and twenty-five dollars would be refunded.
Can I get mine back on?
And this could be a lot less money if there's not some legal buying in for.
Yes, yes.
Modern employees, and they have to use it ten days a month.
Yes.
In order to get paid back that.
Yes, yes. Well, it gets unpaid whole deduction, and they would have to initial, they have to do it first, and then they're reimbursed. Any other questions? Not on ask for a motion to approve this, so that we can move on or drop it and forget. No, they can vote either way.
But we just want to decide to choose.
Yeah. They can't go to vote, no.
They can, we're just not gonna reimburse them for voting.
Well, right, right.
Or if they choose, I'd make those.
I'll second.
No, I haven't made a vote. I'm asking for a motion.
I move, we approve, and you won't speak again.
I second.
More discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda is Orders 2011-8 and 9. And what I will explain to you, and I may want to help here. What we've done, like I say, we're trying to cut the cost in the utilities. We did have an individual that worked a little bit, kind of a floater, so that way, the utilities was paying half of that person's salary. Her, that person's job description has since changed, where they do not work in the utility office in. They don't work there in case severe situations could still work. But what we've done, we've taken the part, the half the salary and cost that utilities did pay, and we're deleting that, many of that salary from the utility ordinance, and adding it on to the cities through their, through our financial fund. So they're losing half of the, paying half, and the city's baking up the half. There's no pay increase or anything like that.
So money in the budgets there to do that, though?
Yes.
Why would we change the midstream from where we approved our budget?
Well, just be thankful we are, Bill, if you presented that, we'd have been a hundred and twenty thousand shy to pay the order. So we're bills, lines. We're doing everything we can. Okay, the main reason, Bill, is that person was no longer involved with the utility department. So therefore, there's really no sense in them paying for someone's services that they're not getting the service of.
And this is just recently changed?
Yes.
When did that change?
It has to tell you, we do it here. It changed January 1st, when we redid the, January 1st, when we did the personnel policies. It's something that's got to be on. We're even looking at maybe another position to reduce the amount of utilities we pay. We could do it through the city without putting on utilities. We're trying to do everything we can, I mean, that can't be. We want to be able to do what utilities need to do in the future for, as far as their maintenance projects, their capital improvement plans.
So at the time, they don't need any?
No, the only thing that needs to be.
Yeah, well, what I would like to do with the savings that we would get from this is be able to do an online bill pay, more so than what we have right now developed, a little bit more where it would hold the information and upload your monthly bill, where you can see it, see the history and all that. And possibly outsourced the printing of the statements as well. This past month, I bet we had five or six hundred people call stating they didn't receive their little card in mail. We mail them out, and I don't know what happens to them once they leave the office.
They get stuck with everything else.
Yeah.
It's so very, so easy to not get.
Want to try, and it's, that is already in our grades right now, but I haven't implemented it yet. Still trying to, to be as tight for money as possible, because there's a lot of things we need to do. It would help the office out a lot, so I'm sorry.
How much money, how you're about to pay for this employee?
Um, it was thirty about twelve thousand. I think it was fourteen altogether, and then it was split.
Out the insurance.
In two, and.
You pay out the insurance.
We didn't do, no, the city, the city paid all the insurance. All we did was pay half of the salary, that's it. And then that was split, a half of the end quarter, and I sort of split that.
Did this person ever come down and ask for help, or did you ever ask that person to help in the office or anything?
Her job description changed when, like, a year and a half ago, or something.
No, it changed January 1st.
Yeah, just January 1st. And she's full-time now, like, in Kathy's office.
This person's been full-time for just over a year. With what you're telling me, which has been true yet, that you get more of a benefit, it's paying to have the bills mailed out than you would for no service at all, for picking out this person.
I think by modernizing what we're doing will help us tremendously. The customer service end is getting crazy, as far as walk-ins and people not getting their bill. It just adds up much more work on the office. And we could utilize, I think, by getting, I hate to send statements out, it won't be a bigger expense, but the customer would be providing more information, which in turn help our office, just by seeing their consumption as we have utilities do.
Explain that a little better on this mailer, which has that, yeah. Many people don't get the bills. You know, sometimes you get the bill finally, it's all chewed up from the operation of the post office.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the new requirements, there's gonna be changed requirements for mailing May 1st or June 1st. I've gotten the notice from the post office the other day. They're holding a meeting the 18th or something, I'm not sure, I haven't read the whole thing yet. But I'm sure it won't be long, and these will be, you won't be allowed to send them out as a billing format.
Basically, what we're doing, that's just putting the cost right.
I move if we pass the amendment, the 2011-89 salary ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Discussion?
Herb?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Jamie?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Thank you. Now, I need a motion to suspend the rules. Do we vote second reading?
I'll have to be in animals, right? I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Discussion?
Herb?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Jamie?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, move on.
Be back next month, I guess, like three months, get back, we'll get her. Trying to save utilities money. Next item on the agenda, Mark Cluster Camper, from this 2011-10. Public nuisances, what are you going to do about that, Herb?
We talked about this approximately a year ago, as far as an ordinance to do something to expedite the process of getting lawn load messaged cleaned up. We looked at lots of different community ordinances. We tried to pick what we think are the best items, and come up with an ordinance to meet our needs. Something we run into in the spring months, by the time we go through the process of sending the registered mail, they don't receive it, because they know it's coming annually. The grass goes for forty-five days, or whatever it takes, and if it comes back. The ordinance you have before you cleans up some of our old ordinance, it's consolidated, it's a lot more informative as far as definitions of products, or materials that are or aren't considered. It gives us the opportunity to post on the front of the property, and they have five days to respond, or we can go in and take action to the situation immediately. It also does not require us to do this on an annual basis, as long as the ownership of the property stays the same, we don't have to go back time and time and time and time to get it done.
Let's go ahead.
But I mean, if you sent out a letter, I mean, I don't know, is five days long enough for them to actually get the letter to?
We don't send a letter, we post it on the front of the property.
I know, but I think, didn't it say you would also send a letter to a known address of the owner as well?
It doesn't say you will, it says you may.
I guess I would be in favor of saying you shall, and I don't know that we would want to. I mean, five days doesn't give much time to do.
If you go back to the letter, the problem you run into, Jamie, is if we send it by registered mail, go back to the forty-five day process, because they will not take delivery of it. The newspaper, or the post office waits one week, they try a second time, they do not take delivery, and they make a third time attempt, and then have it back to us.
I'm just saying, I think the attempt should be made, that's why, the attempt should be made.
What you're saying is it shouldn't be sent in five days, and they're putting, when they put them on the residence, it should be more than five days?
Posted on the residence, but maybe the owner isn't living at that residence, so give them, send them a letter in the mail. If they don't sign for it, that's fine, but we sent it out, we attempted to contact them. And I don't know if five days is enough, based on, you know, how the mail runs, if I get it. You know, depending on when you put it on there, if you send the letter out on a Friday, five days comes pretty quick, count the weekend.
So I have to wait then till it comes back to the post office in twenty-one days?
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm suggesting maybe we give, maybe we give ten days, and you also send out a certified letter.
I think what you're doing here is good.
I think.
Obviously, it's a good thing to have. But I'm sort of in agreement with him, just give maybe another five to ten days for the manager to come back. If it doesn't come back, then.
Are you still, do you want to go registered mail, or can I just send it regular mail?
No, I think you should do registered mail, if they don't sign for it, they don't sign for it, but I think the attempt should be made.
I won't, no. You gotta remember, I won't.
No.
We're twenty-one days.
But we need to make that attempt.
Pardon?
I think regular mail is fine. I mean, it would be nice to have a certified, but if you're gonna hold it that long, you go through the plan.
Yeah, because the problem you run into is waiting that timeframe, and it's May the 15th. The grass that was nine inches tall, by the time you go through the.
I think you send it out, I don't, I don't think you wait. I don't think you wait till you get the return, but I think that you should send the certified letter out and make the attempt, to let the property owner know about it.
There may be, there may be a medium there, someone mentioned registered mail, which is different than certified. Maybe they'll send it registered, you have the receipt, you have to wait the required period for it to certify to come back. I'm not saying that, but you want to do, but it may be a.
There's also the option that you can get the proof of mailing for about forty cents. In other words, you don't have to send it either one, they don't sign for it, you just get a little note, a base stamp that says, "Yes, you did mail it."
I think something like that would be fine.
And that would be a, I would agree to that.
But I also think you attempted to do it.
Yeah, but what happens many times, guys, is that no one lives there. The banks, or the mortgage company has, they're able to respond.
The banks are the worst problem we have, because they are no longer home, local mortgages, and they absolutely refuse to take any action.
And the people that goes to maybe live in Wyoming.
I understand, but I think, you know, if you're gonna send a letter, maybe the person lives in Wyoming. Give them ten days to at least put something together. By the time they get the letter in the mail, five days later, maybe, you know, maybe it's too late to even put a plan together to respond to something.
You can do that if you cut the, the height of the grass down by four more inches, Mark.
No, I, I'm just saying, maybe we add five days to it, instead of five, make it ten. That's a suggestion, and I would think that we'd want to send the letter out and get some kind of proof of mailing that we mailed it out to the owner, and give them that opportunity. I don't, I'm not saying you wait forty-five days, like you said, I don't think you have to wait that long, but I would, I would definitely like that. This is my opinion, I'm just stating my opinion.
It's the same people all the time.
You know, you. Do you concur that we don't have to send it annually, or each event?
I'm fine with that.
In other words.
If you told me once, I mean, I don't know, you gotta keep telling me month after month after month.
Or the following spring, I don't think I have to remind you if you're still the same resident.
Well, it says once a calendar year, I think is what it said, right? So as of January 1, you gotta start over. The way this reads, I think it says every calendar year.
Channel ten days, you get to respond, and that's it, and then you can do exactly what you got in there.
Is there any other changes you want?
It looks good.
Because I would like to have it ready to go next month, if possible, as done in one meeting. Because look into.
He's saying, from the border works meeting, he said that we may have another city council meeting coming up prior to, prior to our next meeting.
Are you willing, if it's a special meeting, to add this as an agenda item, the correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
On the collection of fines, is that gonna be sent out, like, as a bill, once, and then it'll be the lien we put on the property?
Then the lien will be placed on the property.
So if you have that in mode all summer, then that was accrued, correct?
Right.
Thank you, Mark.
Hey, Mark, just, we were just, I was just asking, I mean, since it does have a collection of fines, you know, and there are fines listed in this, I don't know, do I do it all in one night? I don't know if we'll all be able to do that in one night.
Well, let me ask you this, can you have a first, if you're Gordon, can we have a first reading on this tonight, as is, and if we amended for the second reading, special meeting?
Yeah, I actually thought it was on degenerates, it is.
It is.
It is, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, I.
So they can pass this, corrections can be made for a second and a third reading?
I move if we pass Gordon's 2011-10.
Second. Discussion, very memorable, please, Jim.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Helen? Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Okay. I don't have to discuss, does the council have anything?
You made a, you made a comment at the end of the meeting?
Yep. What it is, we haven't discussed this, not because it's a secret, but because it wasn't time yet to know what, what ministry names, if the corporate headquarters would agree to it or not. And they have agreed to monies that were available, infrastructure improvements in the Honda area. And they have agreed let us have that money. The county was wanting to utilize part of it, the city wants to utilize part of it for good projects that would cost the taxpayers directly, and they wanted to be funds. So there are good projects, that information will all be forthcoming to the council. The council has to accept that the vote the counties, the TIF boards have to meet and agree upon. And once that happens, things will happen rather quickly. The fiscal budget year is March 33rd, and they'd like to have the money transferred to the Bank of New York by then, so the first draw can be made.
Is there any indication why we change the line?
Honda, not Honda, it was, it was the county, the TIF, and that's all we're gonna agree upon. Everybody's agreeable, it needs to be brought to a meeting and official. And I will get that done as quick as possible, right now, I'm waiting on March 33rd to set that laid up. Black Heaven, later than my twenty-first, I just have money, we'll try. I'd like to have it later than like the twenty-first, like which is a Monday, which I do on a Monday weekend. I guess what you're best, best.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Tuesday?
No, twenty-first.
I'm just asking, do we do it on Tuesday?
Are you saying you can't make?
That's right, that's what I said.
Be more specific, let me check.
Okay.
I'll check on that. Okay. Okay, well, we probably do take care of the other matters first and then disband and then the council will take care of business. Anything for the audience? Very wonderful, taking a motion to adjourn.